Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. There will be two opportunities this evening to address the board. The first being Agenda Item 7.1, the first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 8.1 through 11.5. Please state the agenda items you're referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 13.1. There is a sign up sheet located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board, and a timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up first on the agenda, we are going to enter executive session for the purpose of conferences with an attorney involving pending or imminent court action. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Good. Okay, we'll be right back. Okay, we are back from executive session, and we are moving on to district highlights and recognitions. We do not have any this evening, so that takes us to 5.1, Reports, which is the magnet program. And Dr. Kellag, do you want to introduce anyone here, or would you like me to?
Yeah, actually, I'm going to kick off the first couple of slides and then turn it over to the team who's coming forward. Thank you, folks. So I'm joined this evening with Cheryl Relford, Executive Director for Elementary, Kelly Nestor Baker, our Principal over at Hanby, and Chris Pointer, Principal over at Emerson, and Scott Reeves, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. And I stumbled through that because some of them are new and in different titles, but thank you guys for being here this evening. They've been a great contributor to this. So we're going to talk a little bit tonight about moving forward to Superintendent's Committee, the 2022 Magnet Program Review Committee. So I want to share with the board a couple pieces with this. So let's start with why a program review at all, and a couple of things that come to mind. First of all, and we'll talk about some of the history of magnet here in a little bit, but let's just begin with the last decade. This program has experienced lots of different changes and disruptions since 2013. And with those changes becomes sometimes loss of purpose, sense of what the program's about, and definition. So we just think this is a good time, following in the heels of the board's decision to expand seats available for that program to take a look at what's been going on. Second part of that is talking about how the program, what its value to the district is overall, the elementary program overall, and its alignment to our bigger work on Portrait of a Graduate. And we'll talk about that a little bit. And then with that, as we get a better understanding of the program, its definition, its value, we can talk more about how we demonstrate that value through measuring some of the outcomes. And it's really been 10 years since we did a program review back in 2013, when we will talk about that history, and there's been previous program reviews. So let's kind of do a rerun of the history, and I'm even going to go back pre-2013. This program and the buildings associated with it have a long history of being part of our school district. In particular, Hanby and Emerson, these buildings, have a long tradition of being in our district, and have had multiple purposes, from being just traditional schools in our district to what they are today. The magnet program itself dates back to late '80s in its initial implementation. But as we, and when we look at where it was, back in 2013, the program was at a point of being sunsetted, was part of the elimination from the district reductions. Two of the four building locations, Central College and Longfellow, by 2013 had been closed. Prior to that, the program had operated in all four buildings, Emerson, Hanby, Longfellow, Central College, with about 30 classrooms. We ran three strands, two class, two sections per grade level across the district. And so it was a robust program over those four schools in three strands. That all was being sunsetted in 2013 when we reexamine the program. Jill, you changed the batteries, right? Okay, thank you. It's user error, not the batteries. So 2014 was when we began looking at, it was that 2013-2014 school year, when we looked at reestablishing the program. And the charge from the district at that time from the board was, let's bring it back, but let's bring it back at a reduced level in the two buildings that was then residing in, which was Hanby and Emerson. And so we worked on that, and where we ended up was with the three strands, maintaining the three strands, one class per grade level rather than two, 15 total classes, about 26 students per class, and that gave us an overall magnitude of about 375. So that's about half of it, a little bit, about half of what we had in terms of capacity that was there prior to the cuts that happened in 2011, 2012. So come forward 10 years, last spring, the board looked at some of the application data and made a decision to expand the program. And I'm going to do my best to walk through all the changes that happened from 2022. And this is, so you have these disruptions, right? We have a program, robust program, three strands, four buildings, two classes per grade level, running fine, about 800 kids. Cuts come, we're sunsetting, we're at a point in that sunsetting where we're down to third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, with third grade exiting, with one grade level exiting out a year. We rebuild that in 2013, half the size, run that for a while. 22, we go for expansion again over the next couple of years, adding seats. And so what did we do? We looked at application data, looked at math science as an area for program expansion because that's where traditionally, for years and years and years, we'd had the most applications. So the board decided to staff that, add FTE to that over several years, to make it two sections per grade level over three years. So that was the expansion. In order to do that, though, we had to shuffle the deck a little bit with where some of the programs were. This is all from last spring, right? So we decided, in order to expand the math science, which is at Hanby, we need to make space, so we moved the fine arts program, which was at Hanby, over to Emerson. In order to make space for that, we had to move the self-contained gifted program from Emerson to Hanby, and that moved our whole magnet program to 20 sections at an average class size of 26 to about 500. So we increased capacity over a time period. So you got, but now you got all this shifting around because programs that had been next to each other are now in different places. The gifted program's moved, fine arts has moved, who's related to whom, new teachers coming into the system. We've had change over in leadership in those buildings, so there's a lot of dust up, and we kind of settle in and go, okay, what's the program supposed to be doing? So that's all the factors that add confusion to what the program is, how it's supposed to be designed, who's working with whom. And I know Chris and Kayla are going to talk a little bit more about that here in a few minutes. So then we get into some other pieces, okay, as we look at the programs, what's the value of the program to the elementary division overall? And so as we look at that, historically, the program has been a thematic approach to teaching and learning, where the teachers have this defined theme, fine arts, science, math, world cultures. And around that, they collectively design thematic units, and kids have these experiences. And we integrate the basic district standards that we have for all of elementary around that theme. So it's just an instructional design model. It's not a different curriculum. It's an instructional design model, experiences kids are having, the way teachers design those collaboratively, different model. And when we looked at that program in terms of value, we understand that, like many of the programs we have, it is a whole school approach that really does support the elements of our Portrait of a Graduate. When you look at those pieces and you look at that, you say that is, that has remnants of what we're trying to do with Portrait of the Graduate. And importantly, we see that in other whole school programs across the district. I would point out Leader and Me at Point View and Faust, as being programs that, and you look at them conceptually about what they're trying to do with kids, they have a lot of value back to what we're trying to do with Portrait of a Graduate. And putting those two things together side by side, you see that relationship. So it's not that it's unique to the magnets. It's also present in some of our elementaries in some of the ways they're approaching their work. So it does align, and it has this element of being an opportunity around, particularly around this thematic approach to curriculum design, lesson plan design, about being innovative approaches that we can be using to look at how we design learning experiences that reflect the portrait within that context. And so that's where we see some value. This is another place where we have work going on that's reflective of Portrait of a Graduate that we can look at and share with the district across to see how it works. As a reminder, I've mentioned Leader and Me, that had its origins at Point View as a building that went into that and built that design. Faust took a look at it and said, you know, that has relevance to what we're trying to do and borrowed the same model. So that's kind of the value piece. I know I'm pointing in the right direction, Jill. Can you do it from there, Jill? Thank you. So getting clarity of purpose, defining that, then leads us to the ability to demonstrate the value, right? So we can determine the focus and the purpose of the program and measure the impact of the value, and that's, that proof of value can be cornerstone for sharing across the system. So when we say, hey, this innovative approach, this thematic approach, teachers working collaboratively around this, whatever the theme is, that, the elements of that can then be used to share with, across the system and say, this is how we do this. And I think one of the missing pieces, particularly the last 10 years around the magnet programs and how they can have values, we've often talked about the value being how we can share innovative practices from the magnets across the system. But particularly over the last 10 years, we haven't been systematic and thoughtful about how we do that, right? So that's part of what we need to put in place is, as we're developing those things there and elsewhere, again, I'd go back to Leader and Me and say, how are we sharing the practices and the experiences going on at their school that are reflective to the Portrait of the Graduate and saying, this is what this school is doing that has that value. What are you seeing in your building that does the same thing, right? So that's kind of a push. So it's really those things that are coming forward is, we've had a lot of change over disruption, we want to grow, want to build it out, we want to define its value, particularly as it relates to the overall approaches to elementary, the bigger picture of Portrait of a Graduate and how it does that. And then we want to document that value through metrics and then bring that forward for sharing and borrowing and stealing and building from.
So let's start with why a program review at all and a couple of things that come to mind. First of all, and we'll talk about some of the history magnet here in a little bit, but let's just begin with the last decade. This program has experienced lots of different changes and disruptions since 2013. And with those changes becomes sometimes loss of purpose, sense of what the program's about and definition. So we just think this is a good time following in the heels of the board's decision to expand seats available for that program to take a look at what's been going on. Second part of that is talking about how the program, what its value to the district is overall, the elementary program overall, and its alignment to our bigger work on Portrait of a Graduate, and we'll talk about that a little bit. And then with that, as we get a better understanding of the program, its definition, its value, we can talk more about how we demonstrate that value through measuring some of the outcomes. And it's really been 10 years since we did a program review back in 2013 when we will talk about that history and there's been previous program reviews. So let's kind of do a rerun of the history and I'm even going to go back pre-2013. This program and the buildings associated with it have a long history of being part of the, of our school district. In particular, Hanby and Emerson, these buildings have a long tradition of being in our district and have had multiple purposes from being just traditional schools in our district to what they are today. The Magnet program itself dates back to late 80s and its initial implementation. But as we, and when we look at where it was, back in 2013, the program is at a point of being sunsetted, it was part of the elimination from the district reductions. Two of the four building locations, Central College and Longfellow, by 2013 had been closed. Prior to that, the program had operated in all four buildings, Emerson, Hanby, Longfellow, Central College, with about 30 classrooms. We ran three strands, two class, two sections per grade level across the district. And so it was a robust program over, over those four schools in three strands. That all was being sunsetted in 2013 when we reexamine the program. Jill, you changed the batteries, right? Okay, thank you. It's a user error, not the batteries. So 2014 was when we began looking at, it was that 2013, 2014 school year when we looked at reestablishing the program. And the charge from the district at that time from the board was, let's bring it back, but let's bring it back at a reduced level in the two buildings that was then residing in, which was Hanby and Emerson. And so we worked on that and where we ended up was with the three strands, maintaining the three strands, one class per grade level rather than two, 15 total classes, about 26 students per class, and that gave us an overall magnitude of about 375. So that's about half of it, a little bit, about half of what we had in terms of capacity that was there prior to the cuts that happened in 2011, 2012. So come forward 10 years, last spring, the board looked at some of the application data and made a decision to expand the program. And I'm going to do my best to walk through all the changes that happened from 2022. And this is, so you have these disruptions, right? We have a program, robust program, three strands, four buildings, two classes per grade level, running fine, about 800 kids. Cuts come, we're sunsetting, we're at a point in that sunsetting where we're down to third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, with third grade exiting, with one grade level exiting out a year. We rebuild that in 2013, half the size, run that for a while. 22, we go for expansion again over the next couple of years, adding seats. And so what did we do? We looked at application data, looked at math science as an area for program expansion because that's where traditionally for years and years and years, we'd had the most applications. So the board decided to staff that, add FTE to that over several years to make it two sections per grade level over three years. So that was the expansion. In order to do that though, we had to shuffle the deck a little bit with where some of the programs were. This is all from last spring, right? So we decided in order to expand the math science, which is at Hanby, we need to make space. So we moved the fine arts program, which was at Hanby, over to Emerson. In order to make space for that, we had to move the self-contained gifted program from Emerson to Hanby. And that moved our whole Magnet program to 20 sections at an average class size of 26 to about 500. So we increased capacity over a time period. So you got, but now you got all the shifting around because programs that had been next to each other are now in different places. Gifted programs moved, fine arts has moved, who's related to whom, new teachers coming into the system. We've had change over in leadership in those buildings. So there's a lot of dust up and we kind of settle in and go, okay, what's the program supposed to be doing? So that's all the factors that add confusion to what the program is, how it's supposed to be designed, who's working with whom. And I know Chris and Kaylee are going to talk a little bit more about that here in a few minutes. So then we get into some other pieces, okay, as we look at the programs, what's the value of the program to the elementary division overall? And so as we look at that, historically, the program has been a thematic approach to teaching and learning, where the teachers have this defined theme, fine arts, science, math, world cultures. And around that, they collectively design thematic units and kids have these experiences. And we integrate the basic district standards that we have for all of elementary around that theme. So it's just an instructional design model. It's not a different curriculum. It's instructional design model, experiences kids are having, the way teachers design those collaboratively, different model. And when we looked at that program in terms of value, we understand that, like many of the programs we have, it is a whole school approach that really does support the elements of our Portrait of a Graduate. When you look at those pieces and you look at that, you say that is, that has remnants of what we're trying to do with Portrait of the Graduate. And we, and importantly, we see that in other whole school programs across the district. I would point out Leader and Me at Point View and Faust as being programs that, and you look at them conceptually about what they're trying to do with kids, they have a lot of value back to what we're trying to do with Portrait of the Graduate. And putting those two things together side by side, you see that relationship. So it's not that it's unique to the magnets. It's also present in some of our elementaries in some of the ways they're approaching their work. So it does align. And it has this element of being an opportunity around, particularly around this thematic approach to curriculum design, lesson plan design, about being innovative approaches that we can be using to look at how we design learning experiences that reflect the portrait within that context. And so that's where we see some value. This is another place where we have work going on that's reflective of Portrait of a Graduate that we can look at and share with the district across to see how it works. As a reminder, I've mentioned Leader and Me, that had its origins at Point View as a, as a building that went into that and built that design. Faust took a look at it and said, you know, that has relevance to what we're trying to do and borrowed the same model. So that's kind of the value piece. I know I'm pointing in the right direction, Jill. Can you do it from there, Jill? Thank you. So getting clarity of purpose, defining that then leads us to the ability to demonstrate the value, right? So we can determine the focus and the purpose of the program and measure the impact of the value and that's, that proof of value can be cornerstone for sharing across the system. So when we say, hey, this, this innovative approach, this thematic approach, teachers working collaboratively around this, whatever the theme is, that, the elements of that can then be used to share with, across the system and say, this is how we do this. And I think one of the missing pieces, particularly the last 10 years around the Magnet programs and how they can have values, we've often talked about the value being how we can share innovative practices from the magnets across the system. But particularly over the last 10 years, we haven't been systematic and thoughtful about how we do that, right? So that's part of what we need to put in place is as we're developing those things there and elsewhere, again, I'd go back to Leader and Me and say, how are we sharing the practices and the experiences going on at their school that are reflective to the Portrait of the Graduate and saying, this is what this school is doing that has that value. What are you seeing in your building that does the same thing, right? So that's kind of a push. So it's really those things that are coming forward is, we've had a lot of change over disruption, we want to grow, want to, want to build it out, we want to define its value particularly relates to the overall approaches to elementary, the bigger picture of Portrait of the Graduate and how it does that. And then we want to document that value through metrics and then bring that forward for sharing and borrowing and stealing and building from in our other buildings. And I think that's where we're trying to go to. So that's kind of a piece. The last thing I'd say is, the other side of the Magnet experience we know is also, this is a choice model in these two particular buildings. And we also know that choosing that model as opposed to staying within your attendance boundary school, there's some trade-offs. So what don't you get when you choose magnets? One is you don't get a neighborhood-based school, right? And we all know in elementary school, playdates, all those things, right? The relationships that come with that are part of that. And you also break up, because they start kindergarten in their home school, they transition in first grade. And we know the buildings themselves, as popular as they are in terms of size and quaintness and just the feel of those buildings, but they also have infrastructure lags, right? We look at cafeterias and libraries and art rooms and playgrounds and all those other pieces. And those are relative to some of our other buildings, not the same. And those are the trade-offs people are making when they make that choice model for a thematic approach in the Magnet school. Oh, and transportation is a little bit different and bumpier than the logistics of all that. So there are trade-offs on both sides that people are opting for when they, when they choose the Magnet program. And those are just all the realities of it. So with that, unless the board has questions for me, I was going to go ahead and transition, I believe next up, before I do that, anything you want missed from me or I didn't share correctly. So Mr. Poerner, you got the podium and I'm turning the clicker that I'm not being very successful with over to you guys and hopefully you have more success.
Thanks for having me. Hey, let's try that again. Thanks for having me. So, excuse me, I would ask to share some of the things that Emerson's been up to this year. And Emerson has found itself in a bit of a unique place in that approximately 60% of our students and staff are brand new. So with intention and with a lot of design, we've been really working on community building and building a culture and to sustain that, that Emerson presence that's so well-known. So I'll take you from left to right on the slide as far as pictures go. That first picture there is our student equity team. We are really excited to see what kind of solutions that they come up to or come up with for some of the problems that they've identified in the building as it pertains to equity as well as some other things. And ironically, the very first problem they had was the name of the student equity team. So the very first jumping off point that the adults made was wrong. They have changed that name to Equity at Emerson. So we're really excited with them. The second picture there, that is Ms. Gracie. She has shared with our fourth grade students about her tribe, the Mashi in Kenya. So that's where she was born and raised. She shared about some of the tribal cultures, the food, the traditions, the songs, and in this case, how they carry their children. And that's a fourth grade student, so Ms. Gracie's got some, she's got some, some get after it. That was very impressive. Moving on to the third picture, soon we'll be here at Deo deles Motes, which is Day of the Dead. That's in the first week there of November, I want to say November 2nd. So our students there are working on some artwork, work in the classroom. If no one's made it over to Emerson in recent years of Deo deles Motes, you're all invited. The decorations look pretty impressive. Lastly, we're in a third grade classroom here and students are making self-portraits. This was a great activity that not only included some, some art skill, but students dove into what is their name and kind of defined, you know, with help from family, the cultural background of their name, then began to share that with peers, you know, and again, another layer of that internal community culture building. So some really exciting stuff happening at Emerson now and it sounds like some exciting stuff in the future. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So Hanby is doing a lot of really fun things this year. We are starting to build capacity in a lot of different ways. One of the ways is we have 100 new students who are in our building and so we are creating, well, 100 students in grades three through five, and then we have 52 new students who are in first grade. So we have a lot of students who are new to Hanby. And we are building a culture at Hanby that is creating a very welcoming experience and we're also putting it with our 100th year, our centennial. So we're talking about what are we doing as we move into our next centennial at Hanby? So we have a lot of experiential learning going on and that's what these pictures are showing. The first one is we have a lot of field trips that we are bringing back this year. We're really excited about all of the opportunities that we can bring back to Hanby. One of the cornerstones that we have in our Magnet program is the opportunity to go out into the community and bring the community into Hanby. So we do a lot of walking field trips and then we do some field trips where we actually take buses and go places. So we average, or we are averaging about one field trip per week right now. So we're very busy at Hanby, we're getting out there. And that is actually one of our first graders at Lynn's Fruit Farms. So they did some work with just the science of harvesting. And then they also looked at honeycombs and figured out some, some of those pieces of ecology. So we're weaving science into just about everything that we do. The second picture actually shows a little bit more about that. Even when we are working with manipulatives, we're bringing in a scientific approach. Also with that, we have our scientist of the week. So we bring our kids in and do a lot of different experiments that our kids lead. So they identify what they want to do and then they bring it in and they do it with the class, which is wonderful. We also have, that third picture is our fifth grade, working with Al Pellets. So they are getting a lot of hands-on experiences. So we go out into the community, we bring them in, and then we have a lot of hands-on learning going on throughout our grade levels. And we also, we do have some arts still going on in our math-science strand. We have arts in the fourth and fifth grade classroom, but we also bring in arts just for that extra little STEAM approach. So our kids are still definitely creating and I love that picture she was so proud of, her little foldy puppy that she created. So that's what's going on at Hanby. I'm going to give it over to Shell.
Good evening. And so we wanted to set the stage with students first. We know at all of our schools, the students are at the core of what we do and why we do it. As Dr. Kellogg shared, as we are creating this Magnet Program Review Committee, we want to make sure that we are, the committee will be responsible for presenting the task or recommendations to the board related to the program as we move forward in reference to curricular and instructional strands or focus. And I want to just reiterate the fact that it's a committee decision. We are including stakeholder groups to make the recommendations. We have two components of the review committee. The core group will be the two building principals, so Mr. Poerner and Mrs. Nesterbaker will be the two principals that we're referencing here, executive directors, myself, and assistant superintendent of teaching and learning, so I get to do more work with Scott Reeves.
Thank you and good evening. And you can also see that a lot of that work will be done at the building level and you can see that leading that group will be Chris and Kaylee, our principals, along with Cheryl, the executive director, and Kate Toma, director of curriculum. And we have a great variety of who we're bringing to the table to make these recommendations. We've got teachers, we've got representatives from different aspects of our student services as well as parents. And so that you can see, all right, that our process is very intentional in using a lot of different stakeholders to help make recommendations for this program.
And as Dr. Kellogg mentioned previously, we're looking for a whole school comprehensive program that incorporates best practices to support research and evidence. We want to make sure that we can align the work with both of the programs to a third party so that we have some mechanism of helping us to align and create the work in a way that is purposeful and meaningful. We currently have a process in the district as to how we allocate FTEs for all of our elementary schools. We will adhere to that same process with the understanding that there may be a need to discuss some additional support or services that may be needed moving forward.
And in the same way, we have a process for FTE. We also have budget allocation and we do not, that support financially will be the same. However, if based upon the recommendations of the committee, additional financial support will be considered. It will definitely be done so on how it will impact and benefit the school and the children there and those programs and our district. As well, as Dr. Kellogg alluded to earlier, Emerson and Hanby are our oldest two buildings now functioning in our buildings. And they are part of our infrastructure upgrades that we are undergoing. And so Scott Dorn and his team are going to do a fantastic job of taking our Model Ts and making them electric vehicles. But any additional requests beyond normal maintenance will be considered on how, again, that will enhance the experience of our kids.
And then when you think about the curriculum at the Magnet programs, they will align with the same curriculum that are used across our district and all of our elementary schools. And when we are referencing curriculum, we're talking about our state grade level standards model curriculum that we use to determine what we teach. The design for the learning experience, students will remain responsible, excuse me, the classroom teachers currently take, use those standards to determine what's being taught and then they will, they get to determine how they, how they present the information to students. The instructional materials that we have purchased for the, across the district are board-adopted materials. Our Magnet programs will continue to have access to those materials with the understanding that there may be some need to evaluate what additional resources or materials may need, be needed as we move forward to determine a focus.
And finally, as we enhance our programs and we look at the resources, we certainly want to make sure that our teachers are very well-prepared to deliver the appropriate instruction to these themes and our strands. And so any additional support for professional development, we will look at through the lens of sustainability relationship and the best practice as we look to enhance and grow this program. So any questions from the board at this time?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for that. I have a couple of questions. I'm curious of how the teachers, the specialists, the parents, the special ed person, the ESL person will be picked?
So as of right now, we're working with the building principals to identify building-based representation for the committees. That's already in process and we've identified a few names to move forward with.
So do teacher, or do parents, are parents made aware of this opportunity in case they would like to participate in something like this?
We have reached out to some parents, not all, because of, we're trying not to have a large committee, but just large enough to get, to have all stakeholders represented.
Okay. I'm curious how then will additional feedback be sought?
We will create opportunities to send out surveys and communications so that families who are not involved in the committee are kept aware of the work of the committee and they are able to give input in some format through the process. The core team, as we continue to have our conversations with Dr. Kellogg, we have started to outline the timeline for our work and how to structure those, the schedule. And so I think we will, I know that we will, make sure that we have embedded opportunities for community members and parents to give input.
Okay, that, I think that's really important because I know in the past I haven't, wasn't aware of opportunities like that and I've wanted to participate in some of those things, but letting other parents know that there's an opportunity and maybe there's a selection criteria.
Okay.
Some parents may really have some expertise that we don't know about too.
We'll take that into consideration.
Just one more question if I may. The timeline, you'd mentioned the timeline.
I didn't want to forget what you told me.
Was that?
I was looking for a pen because I didn't want to forget what you told me. Go right ahead.
I'm just curious about the timeline. You mentioned it briefly. I know you want to get started right away.
So the goal will be to formulate the committees and get started, as you said, right away. We know that Magnet applications usually start, I'm going to mess up, mess up the date. I'm looking back to my friends in the back. I don't know the exact date, but it's usually Feb., January, February.
Yeah, we start, Chris, when we normally start the open houses and all that, do you?
March.
March, so, yeah.
So maybe I'm thinking kindergarten. You do know this is my first time doing this. So I had to defer. And so we would hope that we know what our focus is so that we can put that information out to families. So when they're making their selection, they have all the information they need to make a decision.
So by March, you're hoping to have it all wrapped up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much and thanks for sort of laying out the history too and how we've ended up where we are. I think one question I have, so for families who have children in these programs, you know, we don't want to determine sitting right here today what the outcome would be, but I would, I would just ask, do you think we can reassure people that we're not talking about radical change? Like if your kid's in a math-science program now, they're not going to be in a, I don't know, something radically different from that in the future?
I would say through the community engagement process, so representation on the committee doesn't mean that those individuals are speaking for everyone. So back to your question, the, the slide about community outreach is for that purpose, right? It's a temperature probe, not just for, this is what we're going to do and we're telling you, but these are consideration points or what ideas do you want to bring to the table so we can capitalize on those other expertise and bring some other viewpoints in before we start making decisions? So what we want from those people sitting at the table to is hold us accountable for engaging other stakeholders before we make decisions. I, I would be surprised if we see anything so off the current rails that it creates tension. If it does, we'll have to negotiate that at the time and figure it out. But I wouldn't anticipate that based on the process involving the voice of the people who are in the program. And it could also mean similar to what we've already done. So keep in mind, when we moved the fine arts piece, that created a bit of a, of a split as well. So it may be that implementation has phases to it as well depending on, and so I'm just spitballing here how that could work out, but the overall, overarching piece of not being, pulling the rug out from underneath someone that's already in the program, I think is an important one. So I would say that.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Just for families who've applied to and committed, you know, have a particular interest. I wouldn't think that if we do a good job of community engagement that they're going to say, no, all of the math-science kids suddenly want to be in a theater program. I mean, that could happen, but that's not what we're trying to do. We're not, there's no intention here at the outset to radically change things on people. It's to hear from everyone and to just sort of refine what the programs are about. And in that, in that way, I just want to ask for a, I guess, a plain English translation. When you talk about third party, external third parties, right? Can you just plain English translate that for people?
And so there are a lot of whole school programs that are available. You've got STEAM, you've got STEM, you've got IB, those are just a few. Now, we're not trying to make a decision before we pull the committee together. We want to give the committee members and various stakeholders to give input on where we end up. And so I do, and I think it's critical for us to align to some structure and a framework as we continue to, I don't want to say refocus, but as we just assume our current identity as to where we're going with the two programs.
So what I, what I hear in there is I think, you know, we saw evidence-based, we're looking for something that exists in the world that isn't saying, oh, we're going to necessarily 100% wholesale adopt something, but something that can provide support for what our communities want, that has some evidence-based, you know, aspect to it, so we know that it works in certain ways.
So when you think about the math-science program, that would align nicely to STEM, right? And so we've not decided that it's going to be that, but it could, it could align nicely. That's just one example.
Sure.
In my experience, those, looking at those kinds of programs, the advantages are, one, there's a framework of what it looks like. There's a cohort of schools nationally that are already doing that, that offer best practices. There's typically structured within it professional development for people. There's also an accountability piece where some other entity is either through framework, and IB is a great example. At the high school, there's required professional development for staff, certification around that professional development. There's, at the high school level, the diploma level, there's the exit exams. At the other levels of IB, those are typically external reviews of the thematic curriculum that teachers are putting together. So they look at the lesson design and provide feedback on that from committees from around the world. And at least that's what they used to do in the, in the middle years program and in the primary years program. And you see that same And you see that same thing in some of these STEAM organizations and STEM organizations out there, same kind of components. I think those are the things that make the program robust and sustainable over time and provide direction. So I think beginning there as a starting point for examination gives us some, a good leverage point to start from.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, appreciate that, just wanted to flush that out a little bit.
And I want to go back to what you fleshed out. The third-party alignment piece is the one that I've been wrestling with in my head. I understand the advantages and don't disagree with them. But where I do struggle a bit is the alignment very tightly with a third-party organization. I'm going to use IB, and I love the IB program, and was delighted when I was able to work with Mr. Hersheiser and a whole lot of other people to help bring it here. But it is rigid in its requirements for us. And what I want to be sure of is, as we look at the magnets, as, let me see, how did, how did you put it, I even wrote it down, demonstrating how we design learning experiences, and that returned the philosophy of the magnets, which I am very excited about, the idea that these are district programs that do serve as demonstration, that tied to our portrait of graduate work, that actually infuse the district as a whole from these small schools. I think it's a wonderful philosophy, and it's time to return to that. If we're third-partying around that, that in my mind has the potential to restrict the ability to make those transfers into the rest of our community because of the significant requirements that come with joining a third-party entity. So as we move forward with this, I want us to keep that in mind as well. It may be something we, we think is important enough that we are willing to trade our autonomy for the requirements of the organization because of the strength of the organization, but it may also be, I think, Jen, you alluded to this somewhat, the idea of pulling from those best practices and so forth. So I want us to, to balance before we jump wholeheartedly into an arrangement with a third-party entity.
So I wouldn't say we're restricting ourselves to having to do third-party, right? But beginning there as a stepping off point into what you spoke to, which is, does that then tie us to things that may not be replicable across the district? So if you look at the way the slides are designed, in many of these cases, we talk about, well, we're going to do with them, like, I'm going to put it in simple terms. We basically said, we're going to resource our magnet schools just like we do everybody else, unless we see an opportunity for additional resources that have the potential for being transferable across the district. So, at the risk of sounding like I'm promoting a particular program, which I am not, I will use a specific example without qualification. I do know, at least I know from past experience, that in the IB primary years program, there was a world language requirement, which traditionally you look at as an FTE requirement. And to say, well, if that's that case, is that replicable across all the elementaries? And if so, over what kind of time, and can we afford that? That's going to, those are going to be the wrestling points. So we may look at a best practice and say, it has all the elements we're looking for, but this restriction, we don't see as being something transferable across the district in any manner, therefore, we're either going to have to home-grow it a little bit, or go someplace else. But I think if we start from that standpoint, we're forcing ourselves to ask those questions and say, hmm, well, if that's a best practice and it makes some sense, should we be looking at that across the system as in, as something we're not doing now, as an innovation we're not doing now? Professional development's the other one, right? So, that's why I think this give and take around resources, time is a resource, how teachers, how we occupy their time, becomes an interesting challenge point as we go through this investigation. And I don't know that we'll come forward and say, this is the exact program we want to implement at this school at this time. It may be that this is a program we're going to start looking at over time to see its potential for the district, but at the same time moving in that direction, if that makes sense.
That does. That actually helps in my thinking of how we're going to approach this. And in the same way, as we think about how the committee goes forward and how they accomplish their, their work, in addition to that component, the idea that Chris and Kaylee brought up, and I would say this even if I didn't eat dinner with Kaylee every weekend, okay? But the idea about the experiential learning and the strong community connections, the idea of being systemic and thoughtful about those components that already foundationally work in those buildings, I think it's important to keep in mind for the committee as well. And then, beginning as we mean to go on, with identification at the end, as we move toward March, and implementation further down the road and so forth, of certain evaluative components. I think that, that would be important as well. And then my last question is around curriculum. Now, it has been a matter of course for the magnets since their inception, that if you go to the magnets, you still get the Westerville City Schools curriculum. And I'm really glad to hear that that is continuing, I think that's really important. And Cheryl, it helped with what you said about focusing on standards and model curriculum. My question then is, and we had this slide that said, resources will be provided, the board-approved resources we provided to the district, I'm thinking that may be another place that we need to be explicitly thoughtful about what that means. For instance, wit and wisdom is a very strong push in our district and is providing us some really strong results already. Is that going to work within the structure we go forward with? So there are just a number of things, it's one of these things, you just wish you could be part of every, every blessed committee that came along, and obviously can't be, but the idea of looking at certain components that will lead us to a balanced approach to the magnets. The last point is, as people think about what their children are doing or may do, I think it's important for people to remember that the magnets have changed, not just in this last decade to deal with the exigencies that we were focused on, but the magnets themselves, in that philosophy of impacting the district overall, began with, for instance, literacy at Emerson. It's always been math-science, that, that has held through. But literacy, then global cultures, and then arts and so forth. So there has been a continual change that in part, in large part, reflects the needs of the district overall, and how we all fit into those needs of the district overall. So I'm actually very excited about this.
The only, the only thing that, that I would say is thank you all for all of the work that you have put into this thus far, and I look forward to the recommendations that you bring forward and the, what I believe are really some great opportunities for kids and families in the district as we move forward.
Thank you for the committee makeup. I appreciate all the input that people are going to be able to have. I have one suggestion, and I have mentioned this in leadership, and I should have called you today and reminded you, but I would love to see-
Board representation, yes.
Correct.
As observers, we've done before. Yeah, we'll add that piece.
Yeah.
Thank, I'm sorry, should have updated that, I did catch that in the email.
That's okay. Yeah.
Catching it.
So, yeah, no, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, we can do it.
And it looks like we'll have two, really, two committees.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know how that will look to people, how-
I'll let the board discuss that, and Ms. Davidson, you wanted to share with me who wants to represent in each of those committees, because we have some other ones going on well with transportation right now, so, but there's always a space for, for that. So we'll, we'll add that one in, and I'll let you share with me who would like to sit in on that.
Okay.
Yeah. And we'll keep you updated through the Friday updates, what's going on, where we're at, as we move along, and probably provide you updates before we get to the endpoint, so that we're, you know, it's not a big surprise, and we'll keep you updated. But yeah, thank you.
And just the feel of it, if feels like there's not a predetermined outcome, I really, really appreciate it, so, and I think with having a lot more feedback, that really shows. So thank you.
Thank you. That's our intention, so I'm glad it came across.
Yes, very much so. Okay, moving on. 6.1, approve the minutes of board, of the Board of Education meeting held on Monday, September 26, 2022, as presented. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments here? Hearing none.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 7.1, public comments. We do not have any public comments this evening. 8.1, a resolution to approve the purchases in accordance with ORC 5705.41 and Board Policy 6320. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, would you please talk to us about this?
Yes, thank you, President Davidson, members of the board. So these are what we affectionately call the "in and out" purchase orders. This is where we have purchase orders that are dated after the invoice date and in excess of $3,000. They require board approval and order for us to pay them. So the YWCA purchase order, we actually had a purchase order in place that was through a grant and crossed year, so that's why we had to update with a new purchase order. And then for the Silco, I think it's a break fire Silco agreement, we had a purchase order in place at the end of last year, which is still open, but it's not enough to cover the full amount, because they billed us for an entire quarter instead of just two months. So it's in excess of $3,000 the difference, which is why we need to have the board approve that.
Any questions? Hearing none.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Is it okay if I take the personnel consent agenda as one motion? May I have a motion for the personnel consent agenda, 9.1 through 9.10?
So moved.
Second.
Welcome, Carrie.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, and good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Mrs. Marshall. I'd like to present to you for your consideration tonight's personnel consent agenda. The items in tonight's brief agenda represent regular action items in regards to personnel. This evening, we are asking the board to consider and approve the following usual array of resignations, change of assignments, a couple of supplemental employments, while welcoming four classified and one licensed employee to the district. But to take a moment to recognize two retirements this evening. One is John Holmes, one of our wonderful bus drivers, is retiring after 13 years of service to the district. And then Jill Beck will be retiring as executive assistant to the superintendent with 13 years of dedicated service to the student, staff, and community of Westerville City Schools. We want to wish both of them the very best in their next adventure for a long and healthy retirement, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
One quick comment. Let's see. Some people, you feel like you've known them forever, and obviously I haven't known you forever, Jill, but you have my utmost respect, and I have come to love you over time.
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. Jill, I just want to thank you, you made the transition into the board so seamless, and just really appreciate all your support, and I wish you all the luck in your retirement.
And the same, the retirements always, always get us. Jill's someone we've worked with so closely, so thank you for all that you do, Jill. This is, the reason things run, well, when they don't run seamlessly, it's our fault. And when they do run seamlessly, it's thanks to Jill. So, thank you for that, and also to Mr. Holmes for 13 years of getting kids to and from school. Yeah, I just really appreciate you both.
And Jill, I love that I can call you friend. Thank you for always taking care of all of us, we really appreciate you. So good luck to you.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We do not have any old business this evening, but we do have a lot of new business. 11.1, first reading, policy 2413, career advising, and Mr. Meisner, did I say that correctly?
Good, nice job.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Mrs. Marshall. First, it's great to present to you for the first time, so, hello. I would like to present revisions for the following board policy, policy 2413, career advising. This update includes language to ensure our students have access to comprehensive resources and support to prepare them for their future success. This policy ensures we are continually providing relevant classroom instruction, career-related learning experiences, and a counseling program for advising students in post-secondary opportunities, including ways to offset the cost of a post-secondary education. Finally, this policy serves as a pillar of our portrait of a graduate work to ensure our students are prepared for successful careers post-secondary. I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions?
Nope.
Hearing none. Thank you so much.
Yep.
We should have come up with something really tough.
I know, I was waiting for you.
Tough, hard, ugly questions.
I know. 11.2, first reading for policy 2430, district-sponsored clubs and activities, and Ms. Baldwin's with us, welcome.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. So if, two revisions for you tonight that are connected with each other, policy 2430, district-sponsored clubs and activities. This revision includes recently updated Ohio Revised Code regarding religious apparel and extracurricular activities in interscholastic athletics. So no student will be limited from wearing religious apparel while participating in non-interescholastic extracurricular activities unless the apparel poses a legitimate danger to participants. And then that is similar to then the update in policy 2431 regarding interscholastic athletics. And again, no student will be limited from wearing religious apparel while participating in interscholastic activities unless the apparel poses a legitimate danger to the student or participants. Any questions about that one?
Real quick, so, so as the policy talks about religious apparel, can you give me, give us an example, when we say, what are we talking about when we say religious apparel?
So maybe like a hijab or a head covering would be allowed for a student participating in any extracurricular or sporting. And I don't know if, have I had any of that pose the legitimate danger or risk, but if that would be determined, students would be given reasonable accommodations for that.
Okay, thank you.
Want to move on to the next one? Okay, sure. And I'm also going to present to you this evening new policy language regarding diploma deferral for our students who continue their transition-related IEP goals beyond their cohort year. So policy 5460.01, diploma deferral. This proposed policy language codifies current practice of providing opportunity for our special education students who need to continue their transition-related IEP goals beyond their cohort year, to participate in graduation ceremonies along with their cohort without receiving an official diploma. And then our students would receive that official diploma when they completed those transition goals or age 22, whichever comes first. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
I love this one.
And again, this just aligns what we're doing.
Correct. Yep, this has been practice.
Codifies it into policy, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
11.5, first reading for policy 5780, student-parent rights, and Mr. Reeves is with us. Welcome back, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you very much. Good evening again, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Mrs. Marshall. Before the board is a first reading for consideration, an update to policy 5780, student and parent rights. And this policy has last been revised 20 years ago in 2002, and needs updated as there have been changes to the Ohio Revised Code, and these recommendations will align our policy with ORC 3313.60 prescribed curriculum. Now, you know, when I saw 2002, it was very difficult for me to not go into some factual information about 2002. But the Ohio State Buckeyes won a national championship in 2002. This update better defines for our parents and our district the limited identified subjects that parents may opt their children out of. Those identified subjects, as indicated in ORC 3313.60, are venereal disease education, in grades K6, personal safety and assault prevention instruction, CPR resuscitation training, suicide awareness and prevention, and safety training and violence prevention, and in grades 6 through 12, social inclusion instruction. and in grades 6 through 12, social inclusion instruction. And I understand there may be a question or two about just what that is. That is direct instruction on the following components: what social isolation is and how to identify it in others; what social inclusion is and the importance of establishing connections with peers; when and how to seek help for peers who may be socially isolated; and how to utilize strategies for more social inclusion in classrooms and in the school. So that's what encompasses social inclusion instruction. And that encompasses the addition to this policy. Be happy to answer any questions.
I've got a question.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's okay, I didn't speak up quickly. We list the identified subjects as laid out in that law. Is that all?
Well, within there, and a part of that addition, is that one of the things that is one of the major responsibilities of a board of education is approving our curriculum, adoption, and resources. And as such, through this law and what we've added into our policies, is that parents do not have the right to make a blanket opt-out of our district's curriculum. Now, this doesn't impact our the words, the-
Controversial issues?
Controversial, thank you. The controversial issues, which still stays intact and applicable to parents.
And that actually was going to be the last thing I asked you, was do you view this as conflicting with that particular policy?
No, because it doesn't, within our I'm getting old.
So-
Yeah.
Within board-adopted curriculum, there's already built into the process by board policy opportunity for public comment. Same with instructional materials that the board adopts. The controversial issues topic refers to teachers selecting topics that may be deemed controversial that might fall outside of the adopted materials or curriculum. And the obligation of teachers to then inform parents of that, which is built into that process. So we're trying to get all these pieces aligned and being clear with the public about what is and what is allowable. And we'll always work with parents, but I think it's important to recognize that we do have an adoption process for our curriculum materials that calls for public, opportunity for public input. And for example, in our next meeting-
Yes.
Our directors of curriculum are going to present to the board those areas of curriculum and materials that are up for adoption this year and what the process is, so that there's public opportunity to know what we're working on this year, rather than at the end, when we're starting to vote on it, people going, what is there, right? So we want to be better on the front end of giving people opportunity to know what we're working on and providing our teachers the opportunity to examine what they're doing and keep parents informed as part of their opportunities, parents to participate in their child's education and know what's going on.
Thank you. I think it's important as we help people in the community understand what this all means, what the various policies mean, and what they have the ability to opt out of and what they do not really have the ability to opt out of, and the difference between what the board has done and other resources that may be pulled in. There's just a lot there, and some parents wrestle with that.
Yep, and that was a great point, and that policy is pretty clear on that process.
Anybody else? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, recommended standing action business, we do not have any. We do not have any public comments, and that takes us to board comments. Who would like to go first? Would anyone like to go?
That's a good question.
I can go first. I just have a couple of things that I would like to mention. First? First, a brief update on the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit and where that is. An oral hearing on a motion to dismiss has been scheduled by Judge Page for October the 25th at 11 o'clock a.m. The Attorney General's Office, officially representing the state of Ohio, has filed a motion to dismiss the case. And so that will be heard on the 25th. Also, for the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit, there will be an information meeting, informational meeting that will be held during the OSBA Capitol Conference. And that session is, right now, planned for Monday, November the 14th at 1 o'clock. And so that's kind of where we are with the VHO lawsuit. Additional districts are continuing to be added to the number of districts that are participating on a regular basis. I'd also like to thank Ms. Cracherfield, who is African-American literature and composition teacher at Westerville Central, along with Mr. Morrison, who is African-American history teacher at Westerville Central. Want to thank them and their students and classes for allowing me the opportunity to come in and share with them. It's always a very humbling experience to stand before about 40 high schoolers and throw out the question, any questions? But, yeah. But I want to thank them for the opportunity to come in and share with their classes. That is, the partnership that they have, I think, goes along right with the thematic learning process that we are looking to create in other areas across the district. So the pairing together of history along with English literature and composition is a very interesting and good mix and fit together. So thank them and thank their students for putting up with me for about an hour and a half. And then finally, I just want to give my personal thanks to Ms. Jill Beck for her 13 years of committed and dedicated service to Westerville City Schools. But more importantly for me, thank you for being a true friend over the course of the last 13 years. So thank you, love you, and we certainly appreciate all that you have done here in Westerville City Schools. Thank you.
Okay. So there's no school on Friday. Just don't want anyone to miss that. There's no school on Friday. And so I just have a couple of updates. And the other one is actually related to, it's especially pertinent for sophomores and juniors, but it affects freshmen and seniors too. So this Wednesday, sophomores and juniors will take the PSAT at no cost to them, and they're going to love it. And I see heads shaking in the back. But it's really important that they take it seriously because especially for juniors, the PSAT is how you qualify for national merit, scholarship status, and so on. And it's also great practice for the real SAT, which our juniors will take at no cost in March, right, in March. So sophomores and juniors taking the PSAT this Wednesday. So families, you might ask your 10th and 11th graders if they know this is happening, if they're ready. And then freshmen and seniors will be on an alternate schedule. So they get to go to school late on Wednesday, right? And thank you to all the families and the transportation department that's making that happen. So I believe it's about four hours late. So just wanted to put that on everyone's radar. And really, it's, I think it's wonderful that we can provide the opportunity for sophomores to do this too, so that they get kind of a test run before they're juniors. And, you know, just hope everyone takes it seriously. And thanks to everybody who makes the logistics work, because I know it's a challenging day in the buildings to make all of that happen.
Can I add a little piece of the PSAT?
Yeah, please.
So the other part and piece of that is, it gives you benchmarks for college readiness. So, you know, lots of students think about colleges, and there's a range of colleges out there that you can look at. But part of that score, I think some people get tied to that score and they think whether or not I'm going to get in. In sophomore and junior year, it's really telling you where you are in your preparation journey and where you might need to focus and adjust, and also where your skill sets align with what colleges are out there, if that's what you're interested in. And so there's a whole bunch of information that comes out of that that people should dive into and pay attention to, as well as the National Merit and Commended Scholarship Program. So I would agree, I would encourage our students to take that very seriously. And then with their parents, sit down at the table or with the school counselor and dissect that stuff to understand where you're at. It's going to be really helpful.
Yeah, thanks. I think they get their reports in December, yeah, in December. So really take some time to look at those, yeah. Thank you. It's free.
So many great opportunities I wish I had when I was going through school. I have a quick update. A new piece of legislation was recently introduced on October 3rd. Senate Bill 361 was introduced by Senator Frank Hoglund, a Republican from Adena. It would allow for a veteran that has served their country to teach without a teaching license. There's some stipulation that they would have to have been honorably discharged or medically separated, have had at least 48 months of active duty, served as a training officer, or have a letter from a former commanding officer stating capable of teaching. The school governing board must agree that the vet is knowledgeable in the area to teach or hold a 2.5 to 4.0 from an accredited institution of higher education. And the district shall assign a licensed teacher to the vet for two years as a mentor and have three years of teaching. The teacher has to have three years of teaching. So that was just introduced. I just thought I'd bring that forward.
I don't have any comments this evening. So 15.1, the board will meet in regular session on Monday, October 24th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Early Learning Center. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We're adjourned.